Good morning, I can. Sorry, that's not Blake. One, two, three, four, five. Thank you.
Good morning and welcome to the regular Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today is Tuesday, April 8th, and we do begin each of our meetings with an invocation. This morning, we have Pastor Jeff Anderson from The Road to lead us in that. We invite you to join us.
Good morning, everyone. Wish you the blessings of this season. And then National Day of Prayer is May 1st, so before I see you again, I'm assuming that Pastor Gabriel Valier will come and ask for a National Day of Prayer proclamation. But I just want all of you as commissioners to know that there's two events for National Day of Prayer that we'd invite you to. One is a luncheon, and I think you have all the information, the details. And then there's also a citywide worship gathering. It's free. It's at First Press, 6:30 on Thursday, May 1st. And we invite all of you for that. This is a scripture that fits with our season. This is Hebrews, Chapter 2, Verse 9. "But we see Jesus, who was made a little lower than the angels for the suffering of death, crowned with glory and honor, that he by the grace of God might taste death for everyone." Our Heavenly Father, we come today thanking you for this season, a holy season for so many people in our county, whether they're celebrating Ramadan, whether they're celebrating Passover, or whether we, as Christians, celebrate the death and burial and the resurrection of Jesus. We thank you, Lord, for this holy season in a time when we can just set our mind on some very important things. We ask, Lord, that you would help us to see Jesus during this season and be able to see not only that he tasted death for us, he became a substitute for us, but we thank you that he conquered sin and evil and death. And we are asking, Lord, that in our county, that you would continue to defeat evil and defeat sin and death. We pray, Lord, for peace. We pray for prosperity. We pray for your blessing upon our county. We ask for these commissioners, that you would grant them wisdom in the decisions that they are making. And we pray, Lord, that the discussions that happen today would be civil and important and that ideas would be shared, even opposing ideas, that we might respect each other and our opinions even when we disagree. We do pray, Lord, today for our county workers. We pray for those that are out keeping us safe, that you'll guard over all of those that are first responders and guard them and keep them. We pray for teachers in our community, that you'll bless them and make them successful. Place the hedge of your protection around our schools, around our county workers. And we just continually look to Jesus. In his name we pray. Amen.
Okay, and then Commissioner Weisong, if you would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Item three.
Item number three is staff emergency items, and there are none.
Item four.
Item four is changes, postponements, and notice of our next meeting. Our next meeting will be Thursday, April 10th, at 9:00 a.m. for land use.
Item five.
Item five is the consent calendar, 5A through 5E4.
Okay, is there anyone here today who wishes to speak on an item on the consent calendar? Okay, and seeing none, I will bring it up to commissioners for comments or a motion.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
And I would just like to make one brief comment. One of the items that is on the consent calendar is an award of contract and purchase order for the El Paso County Sheriff's Office for the substation. And I just wanted to point that out. I know that there's been a lot of talk in our community about how important that substation is. Really excited to see some progress on this and looking forward to seeing that substation in Falcon and serving the residents of eastern El Paso County with that substation. And with that, if there are no additional comments, I'm just going to make sure we do have Commissioner Bremer online.
I am here.
Okay, great. And so we will begin our vote with Commissioner Bremer online.
Aye.
Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 5-0. Item six.
Item number six is comments by elected officials and commissioner liaison reports, and I am unaware of any elected officials in the audience.
I don't see any of our countywide elected officials in the audience, and I'll double check to make sure we don't have anyone online. Okay, we will begin online with Commissioner Bremer.
Good morning. I really have nothing to add this morning, just grateful that we've turned the corner into April here without an April Fool's joke this morning. And I think the camaraderie that was spoken of last week is pretty remarkable amongst this group of commissioners newly melding together. So honored to be a part of it and have a great week.
I apologize for that interruption. I don't know if you could hear it online, but having a little technical difficulties of my own this morning, Commissioner Bremer. So apologize if it looked like we were dealing with some additional sound in here. With that, I think, are you, you're completed with your comments?
I am, thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner Weisong.
Well, good morning. Last week was a good week. Did a lot of water-related activities with the Pikes Peak Water Authority, Fountain Creek Watershed. The Technical Action Committee was up in Palmer Lake. So we do go and visit our small towns and areas. And we had the Community Development Block Grant meeting. This week, we've got the City and County Drainage Board, along with the Pikes Peak Area Council of Government. And then Fort Carson with a change in responsibility. Some people may know it as Change of Command. And then this morning, actually, we had a men's breakfast and about 400 or so people that attend. And on Friday, the 18th, DHS is having a father, sponsored by the Father, Center for Fathering, I should say. And it's basically a 9-to-2 event with a number of different activities that the different, you know, the fathers can go and get assistance, whether it's the Fourth Judicial District, you know, legal services, child support through the county. Just a great program. Handed out about 180-some flyers to people. And hopefully, we'll have a great turnout next Friday, the 18th. And got to tour the coroner's office yesterday. And great opportunity, but, you know, anytime there's an event at the coroner's office with an autopsy, it kind of hits you in different ways. And in this case, it was someone that was strangled. And it's, they do a tremendous job in trying to find the resources or the issues to support our law enforcement, to bring the perpetrator to justice. But we've got to do a better job as a county, as a community, that this poor person deserved better than that. So with that, I will pass it on. Thank you, Commander Chair.
Commissioner Applegate.
Thank you. So I've had a busy week over the last week or so. I was on a Zoom call Wednesday with Representative Ty Winter and Senator Rod Paul. And it was a town hall for us commissioners, and there was a lot of people out east. I was actually the furthest west that he went of any of their districts. And we got to talking, and amazingly, and all the infinite wisdom of our state house, and they're talking about, we're $1.2 billion in the hole. We need all this extra money. And he told me they'd just taken a vote that morning to approve $4 million in furniture for the state house. So it really makes me wonder truly where our Democratic state reps, their heads are. And we're trying to save money. We're trying to cut waste. They're trying to find a way to do better spend. And they want to buy new office chairs for the interns. So rather disgusting. Thursday was the Corey and Carrie Show. Me and Commissioner Geithner got on a podcast and talked about County Government Month and had some questions answered. So I'm sure that'll be online here shortly and soon. Friday, I met with the DA's office and met with Mike Allen and his staff and a couple of his investigators. And they're just doing a great job. I mean, and I got to check out their, got to take the tour of their maze of a building. I mean, tell you what, if you don't have a guide, I mean, you can get lost on that one. And yesterday, I was over at the foreign delegation. They did an event over at Widener Field. And I met some of the local business owners, as well as someone from Italy and Denmark. And actually, I'm going to leave with this quote. I heard a really good phrase. Trial and error is the best teacher and also the harshest. That's all I got this morning.
Vice Chair Williams.
Yes, we'd like to welcome all of the guests in town for our space symposium. An excellent event at the Broadmoor. I was able to attend the statewide Transportation Advisory Committee on Thursday. And as many of you know, I've spoken out against the fact that there are three transportation goals this year do not include reducing congestion or widening roads. It includes trying to encourage or force everybody into riding buses. So this will be really interesting. They're traveling region to region with a survey they've created that doesn't give you the option to say that what you really want is more roads. And so we'll see how well this survey goes. I took the survey and I said that I literally put down buses at zero and multimodal at zero and then 100% at the other option. And then I wrote the notes, and please build more roads. So we'll see how well this survey goes. It's obviously been created to get the answers that they want. I'm excited to take it when it comes out and see exactly if they've made any changes to that. We have tomorrow the Pikes Peak Area Council of Government, and we have Pikes Peak RTA. And then on Thursday, we have our land use. And Friday, we have our Child Welfare Allocation Committee, where we're discussing more of a permanent formula. This should be very interesting because it's three days before the meeting, and they haven't given us the data yet for how the formula is going to work out. We know the basics, but they're going to have to look at the bylaws to see if they're meeting their own bylaws because they haven't published all of the information. So that we will, I'll be doing on Friday afternoon. Thank you.
So much going on right now, but I want to keep my comments to a reasonable length. So I'm going to try and focus in here on a couple of things that have come up recently. One is there's been a lot of coverage of some of the federal rollbacks on grants to public health. And I think that it's really important that there's the other side of what we know about those that is shared with the public, because I've seen the media really lean in one direction, kind of catastrophizing this. And I do think that it's important to remember, these were COVID-era grants. They were supposed to support COVID specifically, and I listened to folks at our state talk about, but we need these for other things. And so if they're telling you that they need them for COVID still, I think that they're being dishonest. If you are hearing that in the media, because I think that they are using as a general expansion of government, and that's exactly what President Trump is trying to stop. The general expansion of more and more that was a result of some of these COVID grants. And once those start, folks don't want to see those go away. So I am grateful for our local interim director, who is being smart about how we are looking at grants moving forward and continue to see good work on the local level. But I'm really disappointed that there's less coverage on the total issue on what those grants were there for and why it's appropriate for them to now end. But the other issue, and I apologize for having my phone making a bit of noise this morning. I sent this clip to who I thought was going to be in our booth this morning, and he was not. So doing some last-minute juggling, we're going to do this the good old-fashioned way. I'm just going to put my phone up to the speaker here because I think that this clip is incredibly important, if you'll just give me a second here.
I will say, I learned, we've heard from multiple witnesses that this bill has been worked on for over a year. I will say, I learned about this bill yesterday. It was introduced Friday evening. I really am curious about how much stakeholder went on both sides of the issue and if parent groups that are not a part of the LGBT community, if they were involved.
A well-stakedholded bill does not need to be discussed with hate groups. And we don't ask someone passing civil rights legislation to go ask the KKK their opinion.
But I agree. There's no reason to go to the table with people who are echoing the hateful rhetoric going around about the trans community.
So I think that was really important, and this is reference to a bill that has come out. And I have not seen any local attention on this issue at all. I hope I'm wrong and I've just missed it, but I have been looking. And I did tag the Gazette, KRDO, and KKTV and asked them why they are not covering this issue. Sunday, legislators were called in, and this is one of the bills that was supposed to be up for debate, but there was no debate because the Democrats silenced any debate on this particular bill. And so those statements that were being made were from committee and were in reference to my statehouse representative, Jarvis Caldwell, asking if they had talked to parent groups about this bill. This bill would label misgendering or what is called deadnaming, using the given name a parent gives their child as child abuse and would enable the government to take your children from you if they have deemed that you have misgendered or deadnamed them. And it also says that misgendering and deadnaming in public spaces could be punishable of anyone. These are really extreme measures, and for our local media to not have covered this bill is outrageous to me. For Democrats in the House Committee to be calling and comparing parents to parents who care about their children to hate groups and the KKK, this is abhorrent. I cannot believe that the local media is not doing their job sharing what is happening at the Capitol, even though there has been national media attention. This isn't the first time that this has happened, where we see national media reaching out and interviewing folks. These are huge issues, and quite frankly, this is an 80/20 issue. Parents, people, do not think that anybody should be trying to influence children to change their gender and hiding it from parents or discouraging parents from being a part of these decisions with children. And so I just find this completely objectionable. I wanted to bring some attention to it here locally. And I hope that our media, again, I hope I'm wrong and I've missed their coverage. I hope I'm wrong and I've missed their coverage, but I have not seen it. And I hope that the local media will take the time to properly inform citizens about these very, very impactful issues that could be coming to our community if this passes through the Senate. With that, I will move to item seven.
Item number seven is community service organization reports. Seven A Colorado Springs Sports Corp report. Megan Latham, president and CEO, Colorado Springs Sports Corp. Davis Tutte, Director of Sports Tourism and Olympic Engagement, Colorado Springs Corp.
Hi, everyone. I think we have a PowerPoint in the queue. But while we were pulling that up, I wanted to say thank you so much for having us today. As said, I'm Megan Latham, President and CEO of the Colorado Springs Sports Corporation. I am here today to kind of give a quick overview, who we are, what we do, but ultimately I'm here to say thank you for your continued support of our organization and for everything you do for our community as a whole. So I think I can drive this now. Today, oh, nope, I can't drive that. Hold on, clicker. Yeah.
We've got someone coming down the stairs.
I got it. We're good. I can scroll. Thanks. Great. Well, today we're going to quickly just cover sports corp overview, our 2024 events, the involvement that we have from the commissioners and then our endorsed events, our impact, and then what is happening in 2025. So to be very quick, there's really four parts to the Colorado Springs Sports Corporation. We were originally established in the late 1970s to actually help relocate what is now the USOPC, the United States Olympic and Paralympic Committee from New York City to Colorado Springs. So it will forever be a part of us to continue to support all things Olympic movement, whether that be the USOPC, the Olympic Museum, the 25 NGBs, that's the national governing bodies that are here in Colorado Springs, the name Olympic City USA, those sort of things. So with that, the second pillar is what we call our sports commission or sports tourism pillar. And this is a very exciting part of our organization because the expansion of this, even in the last three to five years is phenomenal. And I'll talk a little bit more about that, but we work very closely to bring outside events into our county, into Colorado Springs that are through a lens of sport. So what isn't here that could be here? For example, we found out about two years ago that the Warrior Games, which is an every other year event, massive Department of Defense event, was looking for a new home in 2025. So we went straight to them. We said, we want, we want the home to be in Colorado Springs. We got them to come here. We showed them all the different venues in town, whether that be the Air Force Academy or the World Arena, Colorado College, the museum, everything, and rolled out the red carpet and said, we want you here. And sure enough, 2025 Warrior Games will be right here in Colorado Springs this upcoming year. That's one example of, of what we do on the daily basis. So we have our hands in about 40 other events every calendar year that we don't solely own and operate. And Davis will talk a little bit more about that here in a second. Our third pillar is what we're a little bit more known for and the support that comes from you commissioners as well, is our event management pillar. We put on eight to 10 major events here in our county every single calendar year. It does fluctuate every year, but everything from the Pike's Peak Regional Air Show to Labor Day liftoff, obviously the free event here for our community. Rocky Mountain State Games is a huge pillar of this community. We're really excited that 2025 will also be the first year that we put on what's called Colorado Senior Games. This is really exciting as well. We learned again about two and a half years ago that Colorado was the only state in the nation without senior games. So what it is, is it's a giant sports festival for anyone over the age of 50 and we were the only state without it. And we said, well, we, that's, there's a gap, we can fill it. So it has taken us about a year because it's not just a simple thing that, oh, sure, you're going to just put on a new event. If we say we're going to do something, we want to do it right. So 2025 in June will be the first year of the Colorado Senior Games and we're very excited to be hosting that event. So those are just some of the examples. And then finally, we are working on some community sport programming. We are piloting some programs to bring, to bring after school sport programming to elementary school kids in the schools. So instead of just after school going wherever, they go right down to their gyms and we're doing introduction into sports. So it's a really cool program. We are piloting it right now in three District 11 elementary schools and we're hoping to continue to expand that program. It is also free. So back to the event management pillar, some of our events I just mentioned, we won't go into them too much, but Labor Day liftoff, the air show is an every other year event. We also put on the Colorado Springs Sports Hall of Fame. Cycle to the Summit is a bike race up Pike's Peak. Pike's Peak Apex is a three day mountain bike race. So these are the events that we own and operate either with a partner or ourselves. And then the sports commission events are the events that we help kind of bring into town. So in regards to support from the commissioners, just to highlight, we consistently receive support for the Pike's Peak International Hill Climb, Rocky Mountain State Games, the Pike's Peak Regional Air Show and Labor Day liftoff. As a reminder, the air show is every other year. And so in the off years, a little more support goes directly to Labor Day liftoff. So we thank you very much kindly for your continued support. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to Davis Tutte. He is our Senior Director of Sports Tourism and Olympic Engagement. And one thing before Davis comes up, I wanted to say is, three years ago, two years ago even, this role in our organization didn't even exist, right? We didn't really, we had no idea how big the sports tourism industry could be in Colorado Springs. And once we started digging in, we were like, wow, this needs a whole full-time person. And so the sports corp was like, this is our job. This is exactly what we should be doing. So Davis is 100% in charge of our sports tourism pillar, our sports commission. And in fact, this is growing so much that we even have another person starting directly under Davis as well to help support this whole pillar. So we as a community see a huge importance of expanding our sports tourism. That economic impact is, is, it's there and we, we're just getting started. So with that, I'll turn it over to Davis.
Thanks so much, Megan, and good morning commissioners. So as Megan mentioned, the sports tourism and sports commission side of what we do at the Colorado Springs Sports Corporation is it's, it's growing. It's, it's already a large part, but it's getting bigger and bigger. And this is really because on a, on a national level, sports tourism is, has been and is becoming one of the largest drivers of tourism for a lot of municipalities. And especially given Colorado Springs and the organizations that we have here, the incredible natural wonders that we have, be it Pike's Peak, Garden of the Gods, Shire Mountain State Park, you know, things that get people outside, as well as the, the venues that are being built here in town, whether they're the city for champions venues or it's the United States Air Force Academy, Colorado College, you name it, the World Arena. Colorado Springs is a place that people really want to come to, to, and bring their event to. We, we see and the feedback that we get from a lot of these events that we're working with is that they want to come here because it's a vacation destination, that families will come here either on the front end for a couple of days or they'll stay afterwards. They'll either stay in Colorado Springs, they'll go up to the mountains. They really like Colorado and particularly Colorado Springs as a destination. So you can see in 2024, we had, these are events that we either put in bids for, to, to bring here, or we assisted them with some amount of financial assistance usually to, to get them here. We do, through our sports commission lens, we have an agreement with the city of Colorado Springs to officially serve as the sports commission for the city. So we, we do have some lodgers and automobile rental tax resources to essentially get a lot of these events over the line because many of these events do in fact have bid fees or various fees that are associated with it. So, but for, for 2024, we had a lot of growth from kind of the first year that we started doing this, which was 2023. 2023 was the first year that I would say we like full bore went ahead and were out there as a full-fledged sports commission. So in 2024, though, we brought in a total of 43 events and we had a 49% increase in athlete participants. So this is anything from, you know, a participant being somebody, maybe you can see on the right side of the business of running events. This is a really cool event where ASICS and World Athletics, which is the international federation for all running activities, they hosted one of their first ever conferences that brings together all trail running as well as distance running. And they had it in Colorado Springs as their inaugural event. So it includes some attendees such as that, but then also the participants and things like USA Wrestling, their king and queen of the mountain, which is a large wrestling tournament that they put on now here at the, at the World Arena. So yeah, we saw a 49% increase from 2023, a 32% increase in general spectators. So we crossed 100,000 spectators at these 43 events for the first time. And then we had a huge increase in the estimated hotel room nights. This is really because it's, we went after things that were going to generate the most number of room nights. You know, those are, a lot of those events are, you know, they're, they're bringing people from out of town for, to stay for two, three nights. And you know, we want people staying here, spending their money at local businesses, restaurants, hotels, and then obviously refilling those coffers of, of the large fund. So I'd say that 2024 from the sports commission side was a great success. We will, we'll have a busy year for 2025, but I know that we can, can, can really meet it. So really looking into 2025, you know, we, we had a kind of three pretty large focuses going into this year. One was host as many national governing body, national championships or events as possible. And you can see on the right side that we are hosting a number of NGB national championships. We feel like this is important. One, given our history as an organization with the Olympic and Paralympic movement, but also given that 25 of these are based here in Colorado Springs and the championships that we are hosting, these are NGBs that are based here in town. We want to make sure that they feel supported by their city and county and that they know that we want their championships here in Colorado Springs and in El Paso County. So the second was to expand the number of Colorado State High School Athletics Association championships for, you know, Megan and I are both Colorado Springs natives and I think we both identified growing up that we were kind of tired of going up to Denver for state championships. And they are something that bring a lot of people into town. And so I'll have a slide in a second that shows you the number of state championships, but we've really had a concerted effort to, to bring as many as we possibly can. So not only out of state people to Colorado Springs, but out of El Paso County, but out of, out of town people as well. And then the last is build on the success of previous NCAA championships to host more in the future. We are very excited this year that the Division Two NCAA Men's and Women's Soccer National Championships will be held at Widener Field in conjunction with the Rocky Mountain Athletic Conference, which is based here in Colorado Springs. So this is a, a great event that it'll have eight teams from all around the country, their fans, their families, their players coming in for, for probably typically four, four to five nights here. These are some of the other large sporting events that will be here in Colorado Springs in 2025. Our MAC Women's Wrestling Championship already happened, but obviously lots of talk around the, the US Senior Open, which will be at the Broadmoor. Really one that we're excited about is USA Pickleball. They host, if anybody's pickleballs, pickleball fans, they host three, what are they called? Golden ticket events. These are their national championship qualifiers. And so one of those really kind of like the mountain time zone championship will be here in Colorado Springs, up at the new Peak Pickleball Facility at the Chapel Hills Mall. It's the first time that they've ever done an indoor golden ticket. So it should be good. And then Megan mentioned it, the Department of Defense Warrior Games will be here in Colorado Springs. This is 250 disabled veteran service members and athletes as well as their families. It's going to bring, it's, it's an incredible event that brings in a couple thousand individuals. Most of the events will take place on the Colorado College campus with a number of different other venues, really in the downtown core of Colorado Springs. You can see that that is July 20 or 17 through 27, but a number of these teams will be coming in weeks beforehand for training purposes, getting acquainted to the, obviously the 6,200 feet that we are here in Colorado Springs. So very exciting to, to have that. And then I mentioned just the number of CHASA state championships that we have. We've really tried to branch out and we've hosted the cross-country championships over at the Norris Penrose Event Center for a number of years. And so since then, we really have capitalized upon that success to get a number of other championships now and really diversify it. So we've signed a three-year deal with CHASA and Widener Field to have the Boys and Girls Soccer State Championships, all levels, so 2A through 5A, so that there's not just a single event that people are coming in for. It's multiple, over multiple days. So yeah, this is, we're really excited about this and you know, Megan and I are going to keep pushing to, to have as many more as we possibly can. So looking into 2025, you know, we, we started off the year in February with our Winter Polo Classic. This is the third year we've done it. And then we're going to start running really once the summer begins. We have a golf tournament on May 19th and then Megan mentioned the senior games starting up in, in June and then it's a, it's a full summer from there. Megan mentioned on the slide, the, that your involvement is in 2025 is, is with the Pike's Peak International Hill Climb, with the Labor Day liftoff and then what was the last one? And Rocky Mountain State Games, sorry about that. Rocky Mountain State Games, July 18th through 20th, and then we'll end the, end the summer, August 30th through September 1st with Labor Day liftoff. We're getting into the 50th anniversary for Labor Day liftoff is next summer. So we are very excited to, to celebrate that event. Great, I guess it coincides quite nicely with the US 250, Colorado 150, Labor Day 50. So it's giving me a lot of 50, 150, 250 items next year. So thank you so much for the opportunity to present here today. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay. Vice Chair Williams.
I have to know what the Purple Mountain Throwdown is. Is that a group of politicians?
It might sound like that. No, so the Purple Mountain Throwdown is actually a functional fitness championship. It's put on by a local group and they, they identified that there's a huge CrossFit community in Colorado Springs, but there's not really a Colorado State Championship for CrossFit. So they built it up last year for the first time and it's, they had about, I think it was 200 athletes next year. They're trying to grow it and it's actually part of Rocky Mountain State Games this year. So we've been able to integrate it into what we do.
Okay. And then where is the tennis for the Colorado High School?
So that's at Memorial Park.
Okay. Wonderful.
Commissioner Weisong.
Thank you, Commander Chair. How many athletes do you think during the, the summer you're actually bringing in for the duration and then how many, you know, you know, family members?
Yeah, I'll go back to, to that slide. So on, on this, this slide for, for us, the athletes that participate, so these are all athletes that are just in these events. So they are athletes that, I mean, upwards of 90% are not from Colorado Springs. So that is really what our purpose is, is bringing people that are coming to Colorado Springs for tourist purposes, but with the lens of sport. So our goal is to get as many traveling as possible. And with that, that number as well is going to be the family members that come with them. It's going to be above 90% not from Colorado Springs or El Paso County.
And to jump in on that, you guys also, Davis passed out our final report. We really try to be big on ROI and heads and beds and, and that's what's in front of you. So it breaks down every event from last year, total impact. So Davis and I were here presenting on the sports commission pillar, but if you look at all of our events as a whole, that question gets super complicated, right? Labor Day liftoff itself has 200,000 people that come. Rocky Mountain State Games has 12,000 athletes. Senior Games is a brand new event for us. We have no idea if it's going to be closer to 2,000 or 5,000. And what we're really trying to do is at the end of 2025, it will be the first year that we are working really closely with the UCCS School of Business to put together the Colorado Springs Sports or the Pike's Peak Sports Economy Report. And the idea is we actually want to aggregate these numbers, right? There is so much that the sports tourism, sports impact of Colorado Springs and the county has. What is the economic impact? And we, that, that, there's numbers tossed around, but there is no aggregated number. And so we're working really closely with UCCS School of Business. We have invested in some software and some economic professionals that can help us with this number. So in 2025 in December, we're going to have a full report, right? What, what you guys have in front of you is the things we can track, the things that we know, but there's more to this community from a sports ego. but there's more to this community from a sports ecosystem. So we're really excited to present that. And our goal will be that that will be an annual report out to the county, to the city, to the public of what is the sports impact. So I didn't really answer your question at all there, but.
Look forward to the report in December. Thank you.
Other comments from commissioners?
I'm just excited to see that you guys have so much going on. So it's good. It's good to know our city has just a lot of different events. And I'll definitely be at the Senior Open. So me and my dad already got tickets. So we're excited for that one. So.
We always say we think we have the best jobs in the world. It's a lot of fun to do what we do.
I was going to say, you plan sporting events. I mean, that's dream career right there.
Yeah, exactly.
I'll just check and see if Commissioner Brummer has any comments online. She's good. I'll just add mine. Thank you for being here. Thank you for showing us in real numbers, what the impact is. Looking forward also to seeing that full report. I think this is always a topic that's hard. We like to measure. We hear very data-driven at the county. We always know that there are also, it's impossible to measure everything and isolate out every, every piece of information, but I applaud you for working to get those numbers. I think one of the interesting pieces of information that was shared by Visit COS just recently when they were here too, is the community feelings on tourism here. I'm sure you have seen that information. And so I think we continue to have the conversation about what the balance is, and how do we make sure we're taking care of our community when we do bring in tourists? And they're now utilizing our roads and our parks and all of those things. So I think it's a good continued conversation to have about what that return on investment is, what the cost is, and how we ensure that we are mitigating the things that, that are either an expense locally, or, you know, disrupting the lives of our residents. But I think you guys are very thoughtful about this. A couple of things, did I hear you say 5050 is the age for the senior games?
I know. It's not our, isn't that crazy? I know, I hate saying it every time, but no, the, the, there's a National Congress of Senior Games. It's the organizing body that you actually have to become a member of. And it's their standards, and it is, it is 50. But, but the whole, I think what's really exciting about senior games is, it's just the whole intent is really to just get people going, right? And it gives like, I don't, I mean, like, we're, as Davis said, we're both from here, both athletes. Like, at some point, competition runs out. And so I think it's a way to kind of re, like, a chance to compete, whether it be track and field, or what, you know, it's just a chance to give people the opportunity to compete. To your point too, Commissioner, I think what is really great about the Sports Corporation is, there is that balance of the sports economy, but also like the local. And so I think that's where a free event like Labor Day liftoff, or Rocky Mountain State Games, yes, there are out-of-towners, but a lot of it is for the people here too. It's that balance of like, yes, we want to bring in things for the economic impact, but we want to take care of the people that are the residents here too. So.
No, thank you for that. And I assume that it was probably some standard, it just got me a little off guard. So, so for those who are listening, when you hear senior games, I'm just thinking, there's probably a few people around here who might, you know, could fall into that category.
So sign up, everyone. Sign up.
So I appreciate that. And then I just want to say, I continue to be amazed at the popularity of pickleball. I got, I know there's some folks, including our county administrator, trying to convert me to understanding how important pickleball, my neighbors now, you know, trying to get us involved in pickleball. So I really thought it was a fad that was not going to stay around too long, but it looks like it's here to stay. So it's exciting to see that continue to be there as well. And I think I heard that there's going to be a new pickleball indoor court expansion on the east side of the world, so moving out to my side of the world.
Yeah, there's a new, and then the one that, the golden ticket one is called Peak Pickleball, and it's the new area in the Chapel Hills Mall that opened as well. But that event alone, it's 1,000 athletes, and 99% of them are going to be from out of town. So it's, yeah, it's, I don't think it's going anywhere.
Okay, well, I'm.
And it's a huge part of senior games, too.
Oh, I'm not going to name names about some folks who could fall into that 50-plus category here at the county that might want to participate. Okay, well, thank you so much. I'll just make sure we don't have any additional questions or comments. Thank you so much for being here today.
Thanks for your support. Appreciate you guys.
Okay, we will move along to item eight.
Item eight is public comment on items not scheduled on the agenda, and I am unaware of anyone in the audience. However, there is a phone call.
Okay, if we are ready for that phone call, we'll go ahead and take that first.
This is Carla. Hello?
Hello. You are live in the Board of County Commissioners Auditorium. Please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes.
This is Carla Powers, and I'm ready to speak. Okay. I have 18 questions for you, literally. Why is your attorney not letting County Commissioner Geitner speak with me to discuss your plans for Pike's Peak Library District? And how have you determined these plans? It seems that if this is widely known, much of the confusion and frustration might drop away. We all know about the lawsuit. City Council continues to communicate with us. What is the difference between the City Council and the County Commissioners in that one group continues to talk with us, and one group is silent on its attorney's orders? How is this helping us all to move forward? Where are you in the Board of Trustees' application process? A core request was needed to learn who is, who has been interviewed by you, even though it seems this should be public knowledge. Will you be interviewing any more applicants? Why haven't you interviewed the same people as the City Council? Are you simply going to trust the notes of each, each other has taken during these interviews, or are you planning to use your clout to push through a certain candidate, and that's why you didn't take the time to interview anyone else? Do you see what the problem is? When we don't understand your reasoning, we try to make sense of it ourselves, and might reach conclusions that seem unflattering and untrue. Please, let's talk. When the four, when will the four library liaisons meet to deliberate on the interviewed applicants? You know that we want to be there, as this is a very important decision, to your constituents who care about the Pike's Peak Library District. Where will you post a date and time for this meeting? Where will this meeting take place? I am worried that you plan to give us minimum warning in order to make it as hard as possible for the public to attend. Please, may this be untrue. I am confused with how your liaisons are getting their information. I saw Commissioner Geitner, I just lost my spot, sorry, at, I saw Commissioner Geitner at November, at a November meeting, and no county commissioners, liaisons, at any Pike's Peak Library Board of Trustees' meeting since then. Is this normal for those appointed as liaisons to not attend meetings such as this? Don't you have time to attend Board of Trustees' meeting? How are you staying in touch? Why we can't be frank, and why can't we be frank and honest with each other? Why can't we work together? Are we such a huge challenge that you feel you must do all you can to circumvent us? We're just ordinary citizens who want our community library back. We believe that this is possible. Please, let us help, and please help us. Again, let's work together.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, and I'll just make sure we don't have anyone else online. Okay. Item nine.
Item nine is the called-up consent calendar, and there are no items.
Item 10.
Item 10 is the department and committee report, non-action items, and there are none.
Item 11.
Item 11 is the addendum, and there are none.
Item 12.
Item 12 is, is an executive session, and there is not a need for one.
Okay, we've come to the end of this agenda, and this meeting is adjourned. Good morning. I am calling to order the Public Improvement District number five. Today is Tuesday, April 5th, and we will begin with item one, our consent calendar.
Item number one is the consent calendar, A1, I am so sorry, 1A through 1C.
Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on the consent, on an item on the consent calendar?
I just have a question. Is Commissioner Brummer still online?
I believe so. No, she's not. Okay. Oh, okay. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. So I'm going to make sure, again, we don't have anyone online to speak on an item on the consent calendar. Okay, so we will go ahead and begin with a motion to excuse Commissioner Brummer.
I move to excuse Commissioner Brummer.
Second.
Okay, that's been moved in second, and I'll call the roll. Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 4-0. And now on to a motion for our consent calendar.
I would move to approve. This is our new Public Improvement District. Move to approve the consent calendar.
I second.
Okay, that's been moved in second. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Weisong.
Aye.
Commissioner Applegate.
Aye.
Vice Chair Williams.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. That passes 4-0. Item two.
Item number two is the called-up consent calendar, and there are no items.
With that, we've come to the end of this agenda. This meeting is adjourned.